Welcome to the Candidates and to my colleagues Dan Sweeney and Scott Travis. I'm Steve Baske, the Opinion Editor. This is the interview for the School Board District 7 seat. Between incumbent Nora Rupert and challenger Mercedes Marassi. We're going to dive right in and I'll start with the questions. Ms. Rupert, you've been on the School Board, I believe, for 12 years, is that correct?
Almost 12, it'll be 12 in November.
One of the points that Ms. Marassi made in her candidate questionnaire in the Sun Sentinel, I'm paraphrasing, but the thrust of her point was, you know, if you've had 12 years to accomplish something, to accomplish it by then, maybe it's time to give somebody else a try. So how would you, how do you feel about that logic?
I understand it, but I wanted to let you know you were very broken up. I think I got the gist of what you're saying, but it was very hard to hear. I actually, I believe in term limits, absolutely, we need to have term limits. That's not the problem. The problem is when you have an obstructionist superintendent who was not working with the entire board to be able to get the bond issue off, and be able to fix things in that particular School Board members area. And, you know, some of us got along with the other superintendent and others of us did not. From my standpoint, it should never come to that. But I'm excited about moving on to another term because we have a new superintendent, we have a lot of new chiefs and associates. We're doing a great dive when it comes down to academics and the financials. And I am a strong, strong School Board member, and I will still be that, that person to, to stand up. I'm not afraid to say no, I'm not afraid to ask questions, I'm not afraid to vote. That is right for this, this district. So I think especially during the timing that we're in, we don't want someone to be training on the job when we're in such a tumultuous time right now. That's, that's what I got.
Is Steve frozen?
Yes.
He just looks like a still picture.
It's a nice one.
Yes, I believe he's frozen, I'm sure he will rejoin us shortly.
I put him to sleep.
In the meantime, Scott, did you have, did you have any questions while we wait for Steve to come back on? He looks like he's coming around, but.
Okay. All right, Steve, are you there? Well, why don't we, why don't we ask Mercedes, what's your response to, you know, you know, why do you feel like that, that Ms. Rupert is, you know, has been on long enough and somebody else needs to take over?
Can I just respond to what she said in general? In terms of like rebuttal, I think there's a couple of points there that I don't agree with. Based on a debate we had a few days ago, she did say that she didn't agree with term limits, that she thought it should be more open. And now I'm hearing her say she does agree with term limits, but term limits have been implemented. And the term was set at 12 years, which she will be at 12 years. But lucky for her, this got passed while she was already seated, so she can grandfather in for apparently another 12 years. I think that is ridiculous to me, that looks like a career politician. There's also a couple of other things that I don't agree with that were stated. Yes, I know you have, I shouldn't speak to you directly, sorry about that. But I know she has encountered superintendents that are horrible, for lack of better words. However, the strength is not there. I've read numerous accounts, whether, I believe one was actually even in the Sun Sentinel, as well as a book that was published where Ms. Rupert stated that she felt bullied, that she felt intimidated, that she felt she had to say certain things because there was pressure on her from the superintendent or other board members. To me, that doesn't indicate strength, that indicates weakness. And that's not an issue that I have personally.
I believe that Ms. Marassi is referring to the Andrew Pollak book and the, the issue, the testimony that Ms. Rupert gave where, where she did a deposition and she mentioned being bullied. So, and then I believe there's an issue with Kenneth Preston, a student, that basically, that my understanding is that you had said, maybe you made some comments you felt the legal had told you that you needed to make. So kind of maybe Ms. Rupert, if you could explain, why do you feel like, why are you letting other people tell you what to do, I guess would be the question?
Well, I'm not. At that time, that was four years ago, it was a tumultuous time emotionally, physically. There is nothing that can prepare you for a tragedy like we had with Douglas. And I was chair, and it was ridiculously painful, and people were being pulled in different directions. And unfortunately, the majority of the board at that time was just going blindly along with the superintendent. And that's, that's not a problem that I have. Look at, you need to take three years, I mean, three terms and read more than just, if the only stuff that has been found that doesn't, you know, give me accolades is, is the one and two that you just mentioned. And that's in a 12-year career over unbelievable amount of stress and pressure, and also learning and, you know, standing up. It's really difficult to stand up in the face of abstract and holistically people fighting against you. And I'll give you an example. The, the Broward Black elected officials had wanted Robin Bartman and myself off the board, and they weren't getting any traction. So they had a press conference in front of the School Board. And this was after Douglas, before the election. I was chair during that time. They had a press conference to bully us down, and it was a lot of people there. I stole the press conference. I said, thanks so much for coming here, I appreciate it. I handed out my stuff, I stood on top of that podium, and I took that press conference myself. And after I got done speaking, I went inside and I actually ran the School Board meeting absolutely happier than I did because I stood up for myself. And I stand up every day for other people. But I will say, I, I am much stronger for other people and their concerns and getting things done for them than I am about my own little feelings getting hurt. I, that's not an issue for me. I am, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I thought you were done, I just wanted to add, for the sake of background, Broward Black elected officials is not, that's not the Legislative Caucus or anything like that. That's a separate, non-governmental nonprofit, right?
Yes.
Yes. To, to, to move on from that, that subject, one of the big issues going forward is going to be addressing turning around sliding grades during the pandemic, what's sometimes called the COVID slide. I'd like to hear each of you what Broward schools need to do to, to turn around both, A, the sliding grades in the system, and B, to locate students that are unaccounted for and haven't since the pandemic and try to get students back to school. Ms. Rupert, since you just spoke, why don't we start with Ms. Marassi?
Um, so this is, you're, you're asking how do we get these kids caught up, basically? And so I think there are some online programs, I believe it's called Edmentum, that's being used currently to attempt to close the gap for some of the older students. It's an online program, but I think instituting more programs like these making, like elective classes available, especially for the older kids, where they can get caught up in terms of reading, writing, math, the skills that are going to be necessary in order to enter the workforce or in order to enter college, but just making those options more available. I think probably a big hindrance to getting the kids caught up academically is the fact that there aren't enough teachers, that sometimes kids are going into classrooms where they don't have an teacher for the, they don't have a teacher for the entire semester. They're instead dealing with a rotation of subs. How can we expect them to learn when there isn't even consistency with the teacher in the classroom? So I think if we can get teachers back into Broward County, permanent teachers, reputable teachers, then we might have a chance at catching up the kids in addition to supplemental programs, probably making tutoring more available and at least more, I guess, distributing knowledge of these available resources to the community, to the parents would probably be really important. And then the second part of the question was what?
Not just addressing sliding grades, but also addressing the fact that so many students in Broward County have gone, essentially gone missing since the, since the start of the pandemic, how there's, you know, certainly some of that can be accounted for by homeschooling. And, you know, the, the district has tried to count some of those numbers, is my understanding, but there's still a large amount of people that just purely remain unaccounted for. And, you know, how, how you address that situation as well?
So I have plenty of friends who have actually pulled their kids out of school and are doing homeschooling because they've just become so completely disillusioned with what's gone on over the last couple of years. I think that some of these people don't want to be found, but I wouldn't even attempt to reach out to them and say, come back, until Broward County Schools gets their stuff together. You need to have a reputable organization, a reputable district before we can encourage these kids to come back. So we need to focus on getting it together academically, safety, recruiting our teachers, making sure there's no more fraud going on financially. All these things need to be checked before we can actually sell ourselves back to these kids and earn their parents' trust where they're going to say, okay, yeah, now I'll send my child back to school. So I, I think that is, we've got a few steps to cover before we can get there and recruit these kids to come back.
Ms. Marassi, where in the Broward County School District is fraud going on?
Well, I mean, the grand jury reports have indicated that there's fraud, but in terms of the spending, you know, I don't, I don't speak legal terminology, so I'm sure there's other words for it legally speaking. But it seems to me, if we look at the budget, if we look at the spending, if we look at some of the contracts in terms of repairs and, I guess repairs, the Smart Bond project, for, for example, if we look at some of the money that has been spent there on contracts for building repairs for maintenance, et cetera, I think that you would see there's some shadiness there. In general, I am highly suspicious of this budget, I'm highly suspicious of the spending. I believe there is fraud, I believe there is shadiness, for lack of better words, if we don't want to use the term fraud. I believe there's some things there that, that need to, that need to be sifted through and rectified.
Okay, all right. I'd like to shift gears, well, I wanted to ask you this question, Ms. Marassi. Do you think, do you think public school teachers in Broward County are underpaid?
Yes, of course.
And yet, we noticed you're, you're opposed to the property tax referendum that's on the August 23 ballot. As you're well aware, the vast majority of that money would be used to elevate and increase teacher salaries. So where should that money come from?
Okay, so I'm not opposed to it, I am conflicted, I feel ambivalent about it. I have a lot of teachers that are friends, and I know that if this doesn't pass, it will directly affect their paycheck, which will affect their family. We're talking about teachers who are going to lose as much as, I believe, 12% of their paycheck if this referendum doesn't pass. And in a time like this, where we're looking at inflation, where gas prices are $5 a gallon, that's significant. So there is a part of me that sees that and feels for these teachers. However, in general, I am opposed to any new taxes. I think it's ridiculous that teachers are relying upon a tax being passed for their salary. That should come directly from the budget and from, you know, what I'm understanding, you know, that was, there was a steps program initially in place that was dismantled. Maybe we need to look towards redoing something like that. But I don't think teachers should be relying upon passing of new taxes in order to have a livable wage, that to me seems ridiculous.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, I bet, again, could I just say, if, if salaries don't come from taxes, where would they come from?
Well, passing of additional taxes, this should be budgeted from within the original budget, the yearly budget. This referendum is relying upon an additional tax to pay these teachers, that doesn't seem fair.
I want to give Nora Rupert a chance to comment on the same question, Ms. Rupert, the referendum, whether you're, we know that you had issues with the date, but you are a proponent of this tax, and tell us about that.
Thank you, yes, I, I always find it difficult to tax our, our stakeholders more, but I was very happy when it passed the last time, and we were able to implement more security issues, more mental health meetings, more mental health staff, and our teachers certainly got their bonus. We beat up the, the safety, and as well as we're able to improve our security people and some of the security software, et cetera. So I, I am very happy that we did it, and, and my friends got, they got their salaries bumped up a little bit. The part that's a little, you know, uneasy for me is there was no way to know that COVID and a major economic downfall would be happening. We, we have implemented this referendum for the last four years almost, and it has gone to the places that we've needed. And I, and one part for me is that I'm not supporting, is that I did not want it to go on this agenda for, for, to vote, to vote on. So because I think it was rushed, people didn't quite understand what they were doing. They got conflicted between the bond and, for, for the Smart Bond and this referendum. They just really, too many people are getting those two things confused. And in many town halls and phone calls and many meetings that I go to, it's still confusing them. So I, I raised my hand and said, I am, of course, going to support this for our teachers and our employees and our staff and for safety and mental health. However, it needs to be on November because we need more time to share with the community, so.
Okay, I want to circle back to Ms. Marassi very briefly, Ms. Marassi, and ask this question as respectfully as I can. You said you were ambivalent about the tax. You're going to get a ballot in a few weeks, the ballot doesn't have an ambivalence for a choice. It's yes or no on this tax, so I'm going to ask you, please, are you for it or against it?
I'm going to tell you, I think I'm going to make that decision the day of, because it depends on the day. I, I don't know, I honestly, I don't know, I don't know how I'm going to vote, because I want to vote no, I do, but I, I feel an obligation towards my teacher friends, and I'm not sure.
Okay, all right. Ms. Rupert, the decision to put this on the August ballot, your, your, your logic is interesting because it's, it is true that the School District is on this accelerated truncated public outreach schedule. We've said on the editorial page that, that not enough information is getting to voters in a timely manner.
Yes.
Could you tell us what you've done or tried to do to ramp up the, the public information for this tax and why it's a good idea?
Yes, but legally, I can't tell people how to vote for it. So I, I'm only able to educate. So for the last two months or so, three, when I've had town halls, when I've been to the PTA, when I've gone to the district advisory, when I've gone to the gifted groups, and I'm, I'm there to talk about what's going on with the district, but I also tell them what has been done with the bond, and I share with them an audit that, that was, I think it was S. Davis that did it, as well as our particular in-house auditor has taken a look through it as well. And that was, was, I think, an easier talk for them. I still think Palm Beach got themselves a committee of people that went over their referendum. I, I actually think that's a terrific idea. I mean, à la Tax Watch, there you have a separate third party or people looking at that and being able to say, you know what, the money is going exactly how it's supposed to go. And we had somebody say the money's going where it has to go already. So if, if we don't do it, I just know that the, the people are going to be, our employees, our children and our families are going to be in trouble because we'll have to pull back on the mental health, we'll have to pull back on the salaries for our teachers and our staff in a time where we have fluctuating, fluctuating, whoops, oh, sorry, my cat got that one. He's a devil. I'm fluctuating between, I'm sorry, the, it's one second. Start again, all right, I'm with, with the fluctuating economy, is what I was trying to say before the cat decided he needed cat food. So go ahead.
Yes. My question is, if the bond issue, the referendum fails, the referendum, if the referendum fails on the ballot, will, will instructional personnel in the Broward School District, some of them lose their jobs, what's, what's going to happen?
I believe, I mean, I'm like 90% sure on this, that the bond, and Scott can, Scott can jump in and say if I am. We have until 2023, so we would have November to be able to talk about it as well. So it's not at the end of the road. If it did not pass in August, there is another opportunity to have it again. I don't know how much closer we would want to get to that 23rd, I mean, 2023. Ideally, this would be it, or November would be it. So I think that's the direction that has been given to the School Board so far.
One last point on that, you're saying to me, if I'm hearing you correctly, that if it's, if it fails on August 23rd, it is possible the School Board will turn right around, reframe the question and put it on the November ballot?
That has been talked about, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's cutting it awfully closely with the Supervisor of Elections, but I hear what you're saying.
Right, I mean, it's been talked about, but it hasn't been voted on, and no direction from the School Board has been, has been taken on that. It's just what we've heard, because I kept saying, I want November, I want November. And the response was, if it doesn't in August, we'll have, we'll be able to put it on in November. So that's, that's the information that was given to me, that's the information I'm giving to you.
Okay. Isn't, isn't there a deadline to have to get it to the Board of Supervisor, or Board Supervisor of Elections Office? I mean, would they allow you to put it on in early September or late August? I, I thought they had to be in like by June or something like that.
I, I haven't heard that, and you may know that. I just know that we were told we'd have another opportunity. So I, I would, I would definitely, I will ask our, our lobbyist, John Sullivan, and some of our internal people, what exactly it is, and I could, I can email that to you.
Yeah, thanks, I mean, there is time, because the November ballot is going to be reflective of who's in a runoff election from the August ballot, obviously.
Right, right.
And you, and you don't, you don't certify elections till like 10 days after the election, so there's a little bit of time in there. I want to shift gears and ask Ms. Marassi a question on a different topic. Ms. Marassi, I'm sure you remember well, last year, Broward and other counties were flashpoints of debate and disagreement over the, over the need for a mask mandate in schools. The Broward School Board voted eight to one to impose a mask mandate, and Governor Ron DeSantis and the Department of Education were opposed to this. There were threats to strip the board members' salaries and lots of other things. I wanted to ask you, you know, from your perspective, who was right and who was wrong in that controversy? Your sentiments lie with the school?
Okay, I think I know what you're asking me here. Did I agree with the School Board's decision to defy Ron DeSantis's order? No, I did not agree with that decision. I think they are a board elected to, for one purpose, education. They are not health, they are not health experts, and they have no business making health decisions that affect the lives of children. I think that parents have the responsibility to make the decision in terms of what is in the best interest of the health of their child. To this day, when I walk into schools, I see kids that are still wearing a mask. Why? Because their parents send them in a mask. That has always been the parent's choice, the School Board had no business getting involved. And when the threat was made by DeSantis that if they defied this order, they were going to remove or strip money from the teachers' salaries, I believe it was Ms. Rupert that said, bring it on. So I think that kind of just shows a disconnect here, a disconnect with the parents and the fact that many parents were saying, we want the right to choose whether or not our kid wears a mask. And I think there's a disconnect with the teachers, with the School Board saying, we're going to make a unilateral decision, and we don't care if it affects these kids, we don't care if it affects the parents, and we don't care if it affects the, the pay of these teachers. I think the School Board's decision there was disgusting.
Ms. Marassi, I'm, I, just to get on that, I mean, if we were in Polk County, I would probably agree with you, but Broward is the most liberal county in the entire state. Do you really believe that most parents took the same view as you do on this issue?
Most? No, but I think that in hindsight, did it make a difference? No, again, kids are masked to this day in the school system. It doesn't matter whether, like, the, the point is an overstep. The School Board needs to focus on education, they are not health experts. To me, you don't make that overstep, like, stay in your lane.
Let me, let us break. Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, yeah, I'll go, I'll go on and ask a question, well. Because I, Ms. Marassi, I, I read your questionnaire, and one of the things that was interesting is that you didn't really want to answer about the parental rights, Don't Say Gay bill, that you said you had conflicting feelings about that, you'd be happy to discuss it during the interview. So could you please discuss what's your, your feeling? Were you in support of that, why or why not?
How much time do you have?
That's.
This is a, because this is a topic that I'm coming from a mental health perspective. I'm going to speak on this topic as a mental health professional, as someone who's educated in this, as someone who gives lectures in a public university regarding topics such as these. I am not, I can't water it down, I can't answer that question in one or two sentences. If you've got the time, I will break it down for you. I'm going to tell you, my main conflict is I don't like the overreach of DeSantis, and I don't like, I don't like the state getting involved in local issues, okay? That part bothers me. However, do I agree with the teaching of LGBTQ issues in school? No, and here's why, because I don't believe LGBT has anything to do with T. Lesbian, gay, bisexual has to do with sexual orientation. What goes on in someone's bedroom between two consenting adults is nobody's business whatsoever. I think sex is natural, I think it's normal. However, the T is representative of transgender. For people who are in the psychology field, there is a close relationship with the term transgender and gender dysphoria, which is a psychiatric illness. I don't think we should be normalizing and discussing psychological disorders with kids unless we're going to talk about all of them. If we're going to talk about bipolar and schizophrenia, then sure, let's talk about gender dysphoria. It's not like it's a bad idea to talk about psychological illness with children. I would say older children, so maybe adolescence would be the better phrase there. So talking about psychological disorders with adolescents makes sense because we teach them empathy, we teach them understanding, we teach that people go through struggles. But when we're blanketing terms and putting LGBT together, and not that, you know, this, Florida didn't do that, the movement did that and put the terms together, they don't belong together. They are not related. Any psychology professional will tell you they have nothing to do with one another. One is sexual orientation, one is gender identity. They're not the same.
Do you believe that, do you believe that being gay is all about sex?
Being gay is about your sexual orientation, what you're attracted to, who you're interested in. So I mean, is it all about sex? I mean, I think that's, I think you're kind of.
I mean, to mention, to mention an LGBTQ person, is that, are you, are you basically talking to kids about sex? If you say, these were, you know, famous LGBTQ people in history?
Again, I won't put the letters together, but if I say, if I'm talking about LGBT, if I'm talking about lesbian, gay, bisexual, I'm talking about who this person is attracted to. Is it all about sex? No, there's more to it than that. I mean, we're talking about gay rights in terms of marriage, in terms of adoption. Those things are super important, I would discuss them all day, every day. But I, again, I separate that from the issue of transgender, I, I can't put the two together. And so when we're making blatant statements about what we talk about regarding LGBTQ, I have a hard time because they don't go together for me.
Ms. Marassi, do you consider gender dysphoria or gender identity disorder to be a, a, a mental health issue?
Of course.
The, the APA removed gender identity disorder from its health manual like 10 years ago, and the World Health Organization followed suit, I think in 2019. So why, why do you maintain that this is still, you know, something that's a, that's a disorder or a mental health issue?
Do you want me to get my DSM behind me and open it up, because it's still in there? Still in every textbook I teach in class, so. I think what you'll find is that some people say that not all transgender equates to gender dysphoria. Some people say that they look at it more as like a continuum. For most people in the psychology field, we say that if there is no dysfunction, if there is no impairment in functioning, then it's not a disorder. So it is possible that people who have the experience of being transgender but don't feel a lot of, I guess, turmoil or inner struggle with it, we could say, okay, there is no psychological dysfunction there because they are, they aren't suffering, there isn't an impairment in functioning. But you have to imagine somebody who is born biologically female but identifies as a male or vice versa, I would imagine that's extremely difficult, I would imagine it's very confusing, I would imagine it's very freaking painful. So yes, I would say there's some sort of psychological distress going on there, especially when the overwhelming vast majority of people do identify with their natal sex. Like I say, you guys, this is a topic. This is a big topic. This is not something we can whittle down to a couple minutes.
Okay, let me, let me bring Nora Rupert back into the conversation and ask you first, Ms. Rupert, to, to respond or comment on what you just heard from your opponent.
The conversation was, was very uncomfortable. It seemed to come out very stilted and very uncomfortable. All I, I know is you love who you love and absolutely must have our children feeling safe in their own skin, regardless of identity or it's just, these kids come to school and that is their safe place sometimes. The only teacher or the only person that will listen to them. It's a place where they can feel themselves and not feel that they're different in a bad way. I gotta say, last, last weekend, marched in the, the Douglas, I almost said Stoneman Douglas, the Stonewall Parade. And even though we got to the end like at nine o'clock or so, the biggest people that were clapping and wanting to actually, you know, hold hands or like give fist bumps were families, moms and dads and kids. And they were wearing their shirts that, that, you know, showed that they were LGBTQ families. And they were, it was so important to be there for them. And that's the only reason that I walked in 92 degree weather, three, three hours, the very end of the entire parade is when we got up there. But people were still standing. And now with legislation that has taken the women's right to choose away, next, I'm afraid, is going to be LGBTQ civil rights issues. And I, I do not separate LGBTQ. I don't. My friends I, I don't know, but at DSM, but all I know is that our policy, and we've changed policies year after year after year, and it took us a very long time in this district to get anything, to really get things done. So we could make our students feel safe, our parents and our employees. We are the largest employer in Broward County, 30,000 people. That is a huge responsibility for mental health. And let me tell you, as you well know, besides our black and brown communities being at risk for suicide ideation, our LGBTQ families, students and our employees are. So I am absolutely disgusted that this bill is now law. So, there you go.
Okay. Thank you for that response very much. I do want to just hearken back, Ms. Marassi, in describing the school board's insistence on a mask mandate in the face of opposition from the state. I believe she said she found that vote, that decision, which you supported, she found it disgusting. What do you say to that?
Me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'd like to say the same thing I said to Governor DeSantis, bring it. Okay, it was one of those moments, this, there's no game playbook for this. There, there is no learning that you could possibly do. This is something that you have had years and years ingrained in you from, from being someone who is a public servant for this district for almost 12 years. And I made a decision, as long, as long as my whole board made a decision as well. And because we were going by the CDC and the AAP, and, I'm sorry, APA. And that was important. So we were following the data. We were following, and let me tell you, if we had not done that, our, our role in that would have been horrendous and the 30,000 employees would have been out there getting all the people sick if we didn't have masks. And we've been told by the Health Department down here in Broward County that this is what, what helped keep our employees and our students safe. Because we were all, we had the mask, we did the hand washing and then we had the quarantine. So there were three, you know, there were different sections of time. But I may, I would make the decision again. I think that was part of our questionnaire. How did you vote and would you do it again? I would do it again because I truly, truly believe that we saved the lives. And as to still having kids wearing masks in schools now, we have a 20% or over infection rate right now. I, I say, great, that's their choice. And when it comes to masks, and I have heard other people say, oh, they, they make their kids sick or they may make that. I have asthma, incredibly bad asthma, and I wear that mask and it's very hard to breathe and talk at the same time and especially during a very long meeting. So I understand kids with asthma, the difficulty that they would have because I did too. However, I had respect for my community, my teachers, my students, to keep them safe. And if we have our kids safe in that school, those germs wouldn't get anywhere. So I, I would make the same decision again and because I know it saved lives.
Okay. I want to stick with you for one more second, Ms. Rupert, and ask you this question. I mean, tell us as specifically as you can, what it is you'd like to accomplish in a fourth term on the school board that you haven't been able to accomplish yet?
Well, I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at the latest data of, or the FSA that came out yesterday. I only did a very cursory look and this afternoon, when we're done, I'm going to go actually pull up my at-risk kids and my, my different schools that I know are, are usually in struggling position and see exactly what needs to be done with them, if we need to put more tutoring in. And I cannot say, by the way, a name of a company because that's under an RFP right now. So I'm not, I don't have the ability to talk about any particular company. I just know that in person, in addition to the eye readies, et cetera, that is something that does work. And in addition to the work that we do with the Boys and Girls Club. So they have an ease of working together. If the kids have their eye ready account for school, it goes to the Boys and Girls Club, so it's seamless. It took a couple of years to get that, that way. And I met the, the former director, Kareem. And we were able to actually make that connection. So the kids had, you know, a continuous aspect of, of studying and be able to make their self-go forward.
Okay. Thanks for that, for that answer. All right.
Wait, I'm sorry, can I go back?
Yes.
All right, you were saying about, did you say how we were going to bring the kids? I, I'm sorry, can you repeat it again? I wanted to make sure I got it.
What, what I was asking was, you, you, you said you would make the same decision again.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. I got it.
I think you answered it, yep.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Marassi, did you want to make a comment?
Um, you were asking her about her fourth term and what she, yeah, I can't really comment on what I would do during my fourth term because I'm going to work on the first one and then I'll let you know. But if, I mean, do you want me to, do you have a question you want to tailor a little bit more towards me?
I, I have a specific question for you. There was a news story in the last two or three days in South Florida, which said
Steve, it's really hard to hear you.
There was a meeting of educators in Broward County at which the preliminary Oh, okay.
Kind of, yeah.
Now it looks like you're frozen. This is a picture.
But you look feisty, so it's okay.
Well, if you can't hear me, you can't hear me. I'm sorry about that.
Do you want to try it again?
Steve, we could hear you okay. Yeah, we could hear you okay there in the last bit. You just broke up.
I wanted to ask-
Win back.
Now we can't hear you.
There was a story in the newspaper for a little, there was a story in the newspaper in the last couple of days which quoted educators and parents as expressing grave concern about the content of a new civics curriculum in Florida, that it was, it was heavily oriented toward Christianity, among other things. I didn't know if either of you had seen this news story, are aware of this issue? And, and, and what do you think of, of proposed changes to the content of civics curriculum in Florida? Ms. Ms. Marassi, I'd like to start with you if I could, please.
Okay, no, I have not seen the story, so I feel like commenting on it blindly is probably not the best choice for me. So can we ask a question in a way that doesn't relate to the story so that I can answer it informed?
Sure. I'll, I'll frame the question this way. What criteria should the state of Florida use to decide what the content of a civics curriculum is? Who should, who should the state listen to?
Um, gosh, I mean, the content of any curriculum should be, it should be fact-based, it should be evidence-based, it should rely on research and empirical data. And, you know, I don't, I think part of your initial question had to do with something about, it sounded like there was religious undertones is what you were saying in the civics, in the new civics material.
Yes, I was. According to what was reported, yes.
So I don't think we should, I like, public schools, right, are a reflection of, of government funding. There should not be religious education in public schools. Now, whether or not kids convene on their own and practice their religion, whether kids have prayer in public schools, as long as the schools are not implementing, you know, prayer hour, as long as the schools are not pushing religious propaganda or religious, religious content, then it's all okay. But no, there should be a separation from, there, there should be a separation of church and state. That is, you know, that's the premise of the First Amendment. So I do not think that the content should have a religious undertone. I think it should be fact-based. I think it should be based on American history and, and not religion.
Okay. Ms. Rupert, do you want to briefly comment on the same question?
I've, yeah, now you're kind of robotic for me, but I think I got it. Honestly, it, we need to have the ability to separate church and state. And I know that there has been the issue with the, the football coach and that's not about, you know, Christianity or in your classrooms. But it's still frightening because I believe it opens up this opportunity for, for people to, to actually have that issue to break really what has been infirm separation between church, church and state. So I don't really, I haven't read the article, I apologize, but I don't really know how else to, to answer your question. Except that who do they go to? A large part of our curriculum comes from the State Department themselves of education. So if, if they're putting it out and it's, it's coming from our, our Commissioner of Education, then that's where you need to, to push back and say, listen, this, this is not what is right and for everybody, because that's the key. It, it has to be, if you're, if it's going to be a Christian over, overtone, that it has to be a Hindu, it has to be this, has to be all the above. Because that is what diversity is. And I would just say for me, it would be, have to be a diverse, you know, curriculum and it wouldn't have to be basically to just one, one religion itself, so.
Okay, I want to ask briefly if they have a, a, a final round of questions. If not, we'll go to some closing statements.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
So Ms. Rupert, I know you had a extremely hostile relationship with Mr. Runse. I was wondering though, you, do you feel like you might be a little too easy on the current superintendent because she's not as hostile to you?
Um, well, I wouldn't say that. She's a tough cookie. She's a tough cookie behind closed doors. And if, on the, the, the questionnaire, you saw that I would, I would rate her a C+. And because of the communication issue right now, I mean, I have definite problems with communication with certain of my constituents and being, having a problem with the superintendent using one of our, her, her responsibilities to actually place principals in positions if, is what is deemed necessary for, for the school to do well. So I don't think so. I, I certainly have been tough for Mr. Runse. Yes, I didn't vote for him the first time and yes, I voted for Dr. Cartwright on this time. And she checked all the buttons, but I wasn't by myself. She checked all the buttons from other people. And I certainly went into my community and asked a million questions and they would get back to me. And I had the, the opportunity to have the superintendent come into District Seven many, many times to reach with my stakeholders. So we're doing our guardrails right now for our strategic plan, which is going to be heavily data-rich so we can actually understand how well the superintendent is doing. And I tried desperately to get that as part of Mr. Runse's evaluation because like in Texas, they have the, the scores for the students for the year. It, it is absolutely was like 20 or 30% of, of his or her, I forgot what she wanted it was, of his or her evaluation because it, that is how important it is to make sure that the kids are, are actually making gains. And having that 30% come from the Department of Education kind of takes it a little bit out of your hands and makes it more data and, and less against, I like this person or not. I do like the superintendent, but I, she doesn't do her job, she hears it from me. And when we finish the guardrails, which I think is going to be, I think, six weeks or so, then we'll be able to have her half-year and, you know, evaluation and move forward from there.
Okay, related, related to that, one of the things that I've heard, yeah, a, a major concern about from people was that the, originally she was supposed to be, and I actually saw this on Ms. Marassi's questionnaire too, is that she was only supposed to be temporary and you advertised it saying this person cannot apply for the permanent job. Probably limited the amount of people that applied the first time because it was permanent. Then that was changed and then she was allowed to apply, you know, for the permanent job. And then she was an applicant and that may have limited your applicant pool because people thought, well, it's probably going to be a, you know, she, she probably has an edge for this. So can you address why was the process done the way that it was done?
The process was the same process that we did with our attorney, Barbara Myrick at that time. She was supposed to be interim and then showing that she was cognizant enough and we, we offered her the, the job full-time. And Dr. Cartwright was doing a very good job, standing up in, in the midst of taking over during the COVID. And she stood up right in front of our Department of Education and held her, her own in that room because she had to stand up for us with our, our masks and if we were going to be sanctioned or not. She, she showed true metal, leadership and compassion. And that's what I've found down here when she came, she became a superintendent, first the interim and then the permanent. She has a lot of compassion to her. She, she gets things done. Her communication, a little bit off even to board members. So I know there's been a bunch of little, you know, because things weren't given to us in a timely manner or she felt too rushed to be able to get it done. And that has to change, you know, and I've had conversation with her and said, listen, our big problem with the board is, and the superintendent in this district is always the communication. People do not get it in a timely manner. As much as we put it out, I think the big problem is we expect people to go to areas or, or on the, the computer to go to email to get their information. Well, that's not exactly the only way to do it. So I would hope that that would, that would change with our new director.
And Ms. Marassi, did you want to comment about anything related to the superintendent or the process?
Yeah, I mean, I think if in the initial contract it states she cannot apply for the job and then all of a sudden she's allowed to, for, I, I do have a question actually. So I read that it was Ms. Rupert who made the motion to appoint her to the job because within the contract it specifically stated she could not apply to the job. Now, I don't know if that's true because based on what you're saying, Mr. Travis, it sounds like there was a change. I'm not totally, I'm still a little unclear as to how that process unfolded and who was responsible for leading the charge on that movement. But I, I would like to say in general that it feels shady. It feels like another one of the Broward County things where we have these policies and procedures that are in place that are subverted when it's of the benefit of the board, when it's of the benefit of essentially these politicians, but at the demise of the people. I don't like Dr. Cartwright's choices so far. I don't think she's a good fit for Broward County. I think she came from a one-horse town to the sixth largest district in the United States. I don't think she understands our demographics and I don't think she understands what she's up against, but good luck to her.
If I may, if I may very quickly, Ms. Marassi, give us a couple of specific examples of bad choices Vicky Cartwright has made.
So I believe Ms. Rupert said she is rushing a lot of her um, her plans. I mean, the org chart felt rushed, but then with the, the most recent thing that came across was um with the, and I'm going to use the wrong terminology because I'm not, I don't, I'm not super in tune with the, the lingo that's used um internally. But it, it was the promotions and demotions, the appointments and leaves, whatever they call it within the board. But um, some of those positions, some of the moves that were made, the demotional, like the demotions that were made seem to disproportionately affect minorities. Um, that was rushed through, it was pushed through. That wasn't workshops, the org chart wasn't workshop, which I think is, is kind of case in point to what the community's been saying for so many years that Broward County School District lacks transparency. So she's kind of following suit with that, you know? If she wants to gain the trust of the community, if she wants to say that she's going to do things differently, she needs to have open dialogue with the community about these proposed changes, these proposed policies. And then when the community, you know, um fires back and says, no, these decisions you're making have an adverse effect on minorities, like it's up to the board to then put a stop to it and go, no, we're not going to vote this through because you're right, there are discrepancies here.
Thank you. Uh, we've, we've gone over a lot of time, but I do want to very briefly, a minute or so, Ms. Rupert. I do want, uh, Ms. Marassi is not the first candidate who has criticized Vicky Cartwright for rushing through the org, the reorg plan at the staff level um and, and, and raising questions about the quality of communication. So I'd like you to address that specifically, please.
Um, well, I, I can't disagree with that. Um, I in fact didn't uh actually vote for the organizational chart for that reason alone. So had it gone to a workshop, it would have, I believe, been understood, people could have been prepared a little more and maybe there would have been a teeny bit more compassion. And it wouldn't have been such a uh, a giant fiasco at that, at that time. So um, and I do, I've heard, I've heard from uh constituents and groups that they're not really satisfied with the superintendent yet. We had the same thing with Mr. Runse at that point. I'm going to say in her training wheels just got off a couple of months ago and I expect a really very heavy uh ride that she goes through every community and she supports every child and um puts the whole district first. But I did want to say two things before we go there.
Quickly, yep.
Yep. I want, you asked me what I wanted to do the next couple of years. Continue my relationships with both sides of the aisle when it comes to legislation. I do that and also um my, one of my most important is to reduce the gap in our at-risk kids. And um, I really have to say that hopefully people will begin to heal and that the culture that has been part of the district, I will continue to chip away at that aspect as I've done for the last 11 years, um, heart and soul. So, thank you.
Okay, all right, we're going to stop there. Uh, you, you, you've both been part of a very good vibrant dialogue here this afternoon and really appreciate it very much. Thanks to both of you for being with us. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, see you later. Bye.
Bye.